Well, good evening and welcome to the Seattle Walton's work session for May twenty third. I'll go ahead and bring this meeting to order. Our first item on the agenda tonight is the Salt Creek Manufacturing Park zoning discussion, I believe led this night, tonight by Aaron.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council members. Tonight, I am joined by our project team, which includes Steve Cooper, who's our assistant community development director. And we also have Chris Green with HHR and Chris Zahas with Leland Consulting Group. And I apologize, I'm not able to get to the net right now, so I don't have my notes in front of me, so I'll be improvising. I hope I do my presentation justice. Realized my, my mic was up a little bit too, so did everybody hear everything? Okay, and it looks like sharing his screen. Thank you for that, Chris. Let's advance to the next slide, please. So this evening's discussion, I'll begin with a project back office and then hand it over to Chris Green to discuss the planning. And Chris Zahas to discuss preliminary findings of the economic analysis that our team has conducted. And then we'll open it up for any questions or discussions about this project, what the next steps might entail. Next slide, please. Let's advance again. So for tonight's discussion, we are focused in the MP zone, specifically in the Salt Creek area, which is in this portion of Twalton. And it is bound by resident land that's designated in the yellow into the south. Share a boundary with our partner, our partner city, Wilsonville. Next slide, please. So in 2018, the Salt Creek Concept Plan designated the underlying zoning for the Salt Creek area and updated again in 2019. And I just want to share that this area consists of roughly two point nine five buildable acres of land zone manufacturing. And it is expected to accommodate roughly one in eight hundred ninety seven new jobs in the future. Let's go to the next slide, please. And most recently, we had adopted the Southwest and the Salt Creek Development Area Plan, which is an urban renewal plan. Just bear with me a moment while I try to find what I wanted to share on this, since I don't have my note on me. With their urban renewal plan in partnership with the Twin Economic Opportunities Analysis, was found that the city simply has a deficit of seventy four acres of industrial land. So a part of the establishment of this urban renewal area was to provide some needed fund for infrastructure in the Salt Creek area as it's unincorporated and it's getting developed into the city at property owners addition by annexation and also to bring in some high wage paying jobs as well as the goal. Let's advance to the next slide, please. So kind of in summary with these planning doc you just went over, some goals of this project are to modernize our manufacturing park zoning code to support high employment density. Minimize conflicts between real uses in this land and the nearby residential properties, as well as provide some flexibility and uses in development may come in. And so let's speak about what the MP zone looks currently. It was established as part of the Leventon Urban Renewal Area. And its purpose was to facilitate development of modern, large scale manufacturing and research facilities. This development typically requires a lot of land to provide adequate parking and landscaping for that true campus like feel. Currently, our manufacturing park zone does not allow distribution and warehousing uses. I know that that's kind of a, a popular industrial now kind of with the need for the last mile delivery services. And you'll see that my office assistant Cooper has joined me. Let me get on track. And I think I just want to kind of summarize that the purpose of this project is, see where did that go? Again, I apologize that my notes are not in front of me, so I'm kind of floundering.
Do you want to talk about kind of the purpose of the?
Yes, if you could take that, I'm sorry, Chris.
Sure, no problem. Yeah, so Chris Green with HPR and so kind of in a nutshell, what we're looking at, the purpose of this project is to kind of bridge that gap and what's allowed in the MP, which is a pretty, pretty short list. It's a kind of an inclusive list of, you know, four use types allowed. And then there's very specific gaping and setback requirements, as, as Aaron mentioned, kind of those length spans of uses and see how well those fit with the current, current industrial get with an eye towards the urban renewal area and understanding that the, the tax increment finance mechanism that the urban renewal area uses really relies on different activity early in the life of that. You are to actually fund infrastructure projects in that area. At the same time, looking at this is, you know, going to be adjacent to some residential areas. And there's some very high employment density targeted for this area, so kind of maybe making the most of the zone and kind of finding a middle ground. Not a lot of development activity happening going currently, the way it's written and some of the constraints and some of compatibility with residential and, and transportation issues in that part of town. So the planning process and how we're going about that. I've got our project team here in addition to city staff here at HPR, we're looking at the existing MP zones. You, you know, you heard a little bit of my kind of first take on looking at some other zones that are in smaller areas of nearby communities, seeing what works and doesn't. The big thing you'll see tonight is the economic analysis and some of the results of, of that from Leland Consulting Group. Is consulting firm that works on development economics. And then transportation planning rule analysis. So DKS Associates is a member in as well. They're a transportation planning firm and they will look at the uses that would be considered for adding to the zone and give us an analysis in terms of what the acts to the traffic system would be and if those are significant projects would be needed to make those core different ways of mitigating that. And then finally, the draft, draft code amendments is kind of what the whole project team and be putting together HPR will be drafting those up and to get a chance. There'll be a planning commission and city work session where we'll actually go over dress and draft code amendments later on. Inter engagement strategy. We're remote and we there's some real advice to that. In some cases, there's kind of pros and cons to that, but we just sort of need to assume that this is something we need to be ready for. And so we want to make the most of that in terms of providing presentations and interactive opportunities for the county, the planning commission stakeholders and the community in general to take part in this. So stakeholders like property owners in the area, industry professionals. Those are the really deep connection to the project. Some, we've done some direct outreach, some of that you'll hear in a little bit later on in terms of the interviews or stakeholders and what those findings were. For folks that may not be as directly impacted, concerned generally because this is part of their community that they live in and to all having a project that really gives people information back so that they can understand the purpose of the project and what some options are is going to kind of be the basis of that. And then in considering diversity and equity issues, looking at just engaging and who the participants are in the process is important, but also just policy outcomes and making sure those are keeping a really broad range of members of the community in mind when making recommendation. So I talked a little bit about the project schedule, sort of in between. We've, we're sort of partially in that first, first row and partially in the row between analysis and outreach. So Chris, Chris from Leland, the other Chris is going to be talking about the analysis and some of those results. We've been looking at the previous plans to make sure that what we're going to recommend, cause within what the actual goals of the plans where we recognize there's many, many years and, and many meetings into those plans. And we want to build off of those rather than do anything that would start over. And then here with council work session number one, so we'll have an open house later for the general public. Stakeholder views. And then the planning commission and council will have these additional sessions as we start to develop a draft code. We'll hear about the transportation analysis and what those impacts maybe. We will respond to that and make some revisions and then Aaron and Steve and the city members of the team will kind of take this through the public here. Hopefully this fall, it's going to be a really quick process, but we're ready to, ready to get to that implementation phase. So I'm going to turn it over to Chris Sahas with Leland Consulting to talk about the economic analysis and what we've learned so far.
Yeah, thank you, Chris. Good evening, council. My name is Chris Sahas. I'm Principal Leland Consulting Group. We're based here in Portland. We do real estate economics, market analysis and economic development consulting. What we've so far is to take a kind of a high level market analysis of the industrial market in the region and then drill down into what we call the Southwest submarket or the South Submarket of where Twalton is to kind of get a snapshot of how the region performs for industrial development. So that as we have this conference going forward about the district, we have some baseline to have that conversation around and it's informed. I'm not going to bore you with lots of tables and charts tonight. I really just want to focus on the main takeaways that we're seeing from the work we've done. We are in the midst of producing a report that you'll, that will be completed closer to the end, so in about a week's time, which will have a lot more technical detail that we'll be able to react to. Go ahead, Chris. So the main takeaways about the industrial market in the Portland area right now is that there are historic levels of demand for all types uses, but especially warehousing, distribution and logistics. And that's, as you read, is driven by e-commerce, which was accelerated by COVID, but has been a trend that's been ongoing and we expect that to continue. That's led to very, very low vacancy rates and pricing per square foot is more than doubled. It's a thing much more expensive. And as a result of that, combined with the constrained land supply that for industrial land that we have here in the Portland area. It's pushing up lances considerably and also pushing a lot of mental development into markets that you wouldn't have expected it to go such as Salem, Woodburn, Newburgh and other areas that in order to find developable land, but also at the right price point, users are considering places that they used to not, they're far from I five and the heart of the metro. Next slide. So I mentioned the Southwest Metro Market. That's from a real estate or a broker's point of view that where they positioned Twalton. It's actually one of the most diverse industrial markets in the region, has a lot of difference of users and representing about twenty five percent of the regions industrial development in recent years. So important part of the region and developers and users really do pay a lot of attention to it for that reason. It's got great transportation acts, obviously, which is a major consideration. So just briefly, part of our analysis is looking at where vacant land is today. So this is a map of Twalton's industrial zones and the hatch marked parcels are where vacant land is today. A lot of when the manufacturing business park that teal color just to the west of our study area, which is a lot of those gravel yards, gravel pits, which are definitely have more constraints than some of the other industrial parts of town. And then immediately to the west is the Tom industrial area, employment area as well in Sherwin. So that Taunton, I mean, area is a, is a really interesting case study that we've taken a look at and we want to do more deeper dive, both from a market perspective, but also I think from a regulatory perspective. It was brought into the UGB in two thousand and four and had some pretty significant use conditions put on it in the employment industrial zone and led to a little bit agglomeration in the early years of the project area where not a lot of development happened, but the city subsequently loosened some of the youth rules, but at the same time put in place some caps on building size in order to limit some of the mega house types of users and keep it more medium scales. I think the cap was around two hundred thousand square feet, but don't, don't quote me on that per building. And since those changes, the TS Industrial Park is on construction right now and our understanding is that virtually all of remaining land within the, within Taunton is now spoken for. So either is, you know, optioned or in planning or under act element. So it's been a pretty quick turnaround and absorption. Next. And then finally, a big part of our research is doing stakeholder. So we interviewed some area developers and brokers, some of the developers who have a control or odds on some of the property in the, in the area. And to get their perspective on development and to get a little bit more ground truthing of some of the economic data about the about industrial development. And some of the main takeaways of that interview process is that yes, there was definite confirmation that this is a desirable area. The Southwest Submarket is diverse and has a lot of different users that want to be there. Also echoing that the tight land supply, which in some cases is increasing land costs five times and what that has done is has while Lance, while, while the market really hot, at the same time, shrinking land supply is pricing pressure that increases risk on development. And one of the main takeaways that we got from the interviews was to take a little bit of a focus on what it takes to get land under development as opposed to teneting buildings after development has taken place. And that a developer really look or to mitigate that pricing risk by appealing to the broadest potential pool of users, that means expanding the list of allowable uses. And that would allow them to market to in multi tenant buildings, which is the predominant industrial type that we see getting built in the South Submarket. And then once the, once buildings get built, they are actually seeing a lot of manufacturing and other types of users that come in. But it's that flexibility to get some lower tipping point of development and feasibility. And we've, some of the additional detail that you'll see in our market report is that over the past ten years in that Southwest Submarket that we showed only about six and a half percent of things that have been built, industrial buildings have been manufacturing and over seventy percent have been one form of warehousing addition or another. And so that really speaks to the you know, dominance of those uses in the market and where development investment is going. So again, you'll see some, you'll see more details as we produce our tech report. But those are some of the main takeaways that we had from our preliminary analysis that we've done so far. And Chris, that is the last slide of the presentation.
Is correct. We wanted to leave plenty of time for questions and kind of get some feedback from council on some of the direction, but yeah, especially with the economic analysis, really getting some questions on through the state of things in the area. It's a pretty valuable resource for starting to understand what what maybe the demand is for in that area and difference other cities have tried.
Can you stop sharing? So we can see each other. Thanks. All right, Chris or Chris? Council Pratt.
I'm trying to understand what we're doing here. Are we, are you look to kind of modify the MP zone we already have or create a new type of zone or an overlay?
It's a great question. Thanks, Valerie. Ultimately, our, our goal is to create a zone that kind of looks at more modernized industrial uses.
Okay. And then, and that's, I guess that leads to my next question, which is, I know there's a from what you've said, you know, there's a lot of desire for warehouse and distribution, but I mean, my concern, of course, is the traffic with that, but also I don't see, that's a lot of employment. A, a lot of people employed and it doesn't seem like those are the two types of industries that would have that level of employees.
Right. I think your, your observation is ultimately at odds with some of our economic and planning reports that recommend us look specifically for efficient land use and job dense uses. So I, I think that's certainly a consideration we should be mindful of when we move with this work.
Okay. And then I guess just a couple more. My next one, I guess, is when it looks like you're going to create this ordinance and then bring it back to council in a draft form. So do we have a point where we can have input on our concerns or desires for this area?
So I think looking at the calendar again, it looks like there may be an opportunity to come back in September to present a second work session to council with some of our more advanced work. So for buy off or feedback. And I don't know, Steve, if you have anything or Chris, if you have anything you'd like to add.
I would just add that if you have any concerns or things that you want heard now is a great time for us to hear them and the same for any other counselors. And obviously we'll, you know, through Cheryl and inform you on the process of updating the website or our public event and so forth, and also follow the process and provide input at any point. I mean, the overall goal of this process is recognizing that the MP zoning is somewhat of an antiquated model that is we're probably unlikely to see a large research and development facility in the Salt Creek area. And at the same, we're presenting you, I think, with some of the pressures that we're seeing from the market side. And so we're looking for feedback and direction on, obviously, the MP zone does not allow warehousing and distribution currently. We also have a whole host of documents, you know, starting with a Salt Creek Concept Plan, leading up through the Economic Opportunities Analysis and then more, most recently, the Urban Renewal Planning that that suggests that the zone should be developed with job dense uses. And so we're here to get feedback and make sure that we're on the right track with, with those assumptions. And if you, if you think not, we want to know.
No, I think, I think you're on the right track. I'll just name my two big concerns right away. My number, or the first one is if we're going to have that many people employed there, I'd really like to see like restaurants, food carts and/or like a convenience store for people to have access without having to drive very far. And then my other one would be just considering that we've already had community members asking for trees and plantings there and that we're really conscientious about that and the noise use. Those are just my two big concerns with that area. And then my last thing is, question is just will you now be, when your next stakeholder engagement you listed there, is that outreach to the community or who are you outreach to, to get more information going forward?
That, that's more the community in general.
Okay, thank you.
Questions? President Grimes and Counselor Saka.
Good evening. Thank you very much for your presentation. I have some similar concerns, I believe, to what Counselor Pratt was expressing. The idea of taking more area and turning it potentially into warehousing. I've huge concerns about traffic, not just worker traffic coming to the area, but then the additional truck traffic that back could involved. I, because I still think we've got, you know, some serious discussions ahead of us about the traffic in that area and how we want to manage it to encourage it as much as possible to stay out of the city and keep it as south as possible so that it's coming either down through one hundred and twenty fourth or it's coming up from day road, but not necessarily going through Twalton on Boons Ferry, because I do think that's a, a big issue. And then, oh, Steve, if you could remind me the actual square footage. We just were working on that massive warehouse for trucking that's going in down off Seipole where Walton Island Greens was formerly located. And that, I think, if I remember correctly, that was going to be the largest square footage wise warehouse currently in the city. I think it was supposed to be with the three football fields. I mean, it was massive. So I mean, obviously there is a demand for that kind of space. I believe that the building itself was built somewhat on spec. It wasn't built necessarily full with tenants, but there was such a feeling of confidence, we're going to be able to rent it out quickly, that it was actually built that way. And it's enormous and it creates an enormous amount of hardscape runoff. It does take out a lot of trees and it adds an enormous amount of traffic. And at least with that particular project, I mean, being on Seipole and one hundred and twenty fourth, you know, we're hoping to be able to manage traffic by keeping about one hundred and twenty fourth, but you know, to continue on with those sorts of developments in the lands down south, it just, you know, I don't think there's any way around the huge traffic constraints that we're developing. And I, that just really makes me very uncomfortable. And I hope that that will be top of the list of mitigation efforts if we go forward talking about rezoning that we're doing this zone overlay.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Saka.
And then Steve, remember the square footage for that particular?
Oh, sorry. It's about four hundred and fifty thousand square feet. And I think you're right that that's what they said, that the link was about three football fields, quite large.
Yeah, it's going to be massive.
I just had a clarifying question. Did I hear you say that the, the buildings that could possibly be built in this new zone could have this multi use purpose where it could be warehouses, but also have some more of these, these other type uses. My concern is that we have a big need for warehousing and distribution now. And I just, I'm looking like into the future and what are our needs going to be in the future? And if we build these, if these facilities are built today, is there sort of this high use where they can be used for different industries as well in the future or now, if that's? Is there sort of this high use where they can be used for different industries as well in the future, um, or now, if that's needed?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good, um, question. And I think it's, um, probably, I think in terms of our, some of our early, um. Some things we've noticed early on in project is there's, there's kind of a middle ground, hopefully between, um, these, you know, very large scale distribution and warehousing only. Facilities and, um, the current MP zone, which doesn't allow those uses at all. And, and Chris may be able to talk a little bit more about this as a host, but. Um, incorporating distribution and warehousing into industrial uses can sometimes be, um. Pretty, pretty helpful in those more use situations. Like if you have a company that's, um, growing, um, they may need a small space for the. Kind of initial startup, but that distribution warehouse may be an important part of their business on site.
Yeah, that's, that's true, Chris. And, and I'd say a lot of those buildings, the buildings are simply a tilt up concrete shell that is very flexible on the inside. That can be adapted to a lot of different uses. So one, you know, for five or 10 years under one lease, it's a. It's a small manufacturer that's got a, you know, just a couple offices and a bunch of equipment in the back. And another time it may be more of a, um, local distributor, a wholesaler, or somebody that. That has a showroom in the front with some summer traffic, but then there is some distribution happening in the back and anything in between. They. They, the buildings themselves are pretty flexible. Um, if you get into some really specialized stuff like clean rooms or, um, things like that.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I also share, um, the concerns of the previous counselors who've spoken, um, voiced as far as. Traffic and also making sure that there's, um, greenways, trails, trees, uh, maybe some, um, green park spaces. For those, um, those employees to enjoy, um, as well as knowing that there's going to be. Uh, neighborhoods nearby as well. Um, and so, uh, just looking at, um, you know. Concrete things and also that noise mitigation as well with trees and, um, any sort of green spaces that we can work in there would be great.
Another thing I was going to mention on the, um, there is constraints in this area in terms of parcel size and the top of it. Isn't, it's not totally flat. And so, um, I think it does really lend itself to some of those more multi-tenant. Um, operations, just because it isn't a great place to have a huge, um, footprint on a lot of that land that's this MP zone right now. And so looking for. Maybe a more flexible, um, option on some of those smaller parcels, uh, a way to kind of. Mitigate some of those concerns about the giant, you know, for single purpose facilities.
Yeah. And that's, that's consistent with what we heard when we talked to developers and, um, is that those multi-tenant business park or industrial parks are. Are really in high demand and they, they attract a range of, you know, businesses essentially, you know, that may occupy only a few thousand square feet up to. You know, a few tens of thousands of square feet, um, and that the buildings are very divisal and to, to be flexible for that range. They don't, they don't take up. It's that you don't drive into the park and it's just all a single use. It's a, it's a pretty wide variety.
Other questions? Just got a few and you did a perfect segue that back in the, uh, couple, three years ago, I forget now, when we're having our. Disagreement with Wilsonville and all the presentations and graphics of what could be built in that area. Uh, with large distribution and warehousing, just as like you got, you gentlemen just mentioned, based on topography, would have to be a series of smaller buildings. Uh, because of the challenges of, you know, building on Basalt Rock and blasting Basalt Rock out of there. Um, so that's what I would envision nothing like we're seeing on Twalton Sherwood Road. Have you in your discussions on the, during your research, uh, I'm on the board of Greater Portlanding Small Cities Consortium. You know, every month we see a, a growing list of opportunities that GPA is hunting down. Uh, you see the most limiting factor is that the lots aren't big enough, but have you been, been in discussions with GPI to see what trends they're seeing too? Uh, of what's coming into the area, you know, companies outside the Portland metro area are looking for.
Um, we, we haven't talked to them yet for this project, but we've talked with them and, um, on other projects and, um, I'm going to, I'm going to. Riff this a little bit, but I think generally what we, what we have found when we've talked to, um, developers and such is that they're. Their larger sites are better, not necessarily to lure that large outside employer, but to build. A multi-tenant industrial park of a significant enough scale that it makes financial sense.
Right.
And, um, there is certainly demand for both. And, and we've, we've heard about, you know, Intel and them not doing any expansions here locally. Cause we don't have those thousand acres of parcels. I don't think we'll ever be, you know, the kind of place that they, uh, come to, but, um. What I'd say is that we have a shortage of industrial land across all areas. So whatever you're able to provide is going to get, um. Used and bought and developed by somebody because everybody's so desperate. And that's why we're seeing development go as far away as, you know, Midville and New York. And some of the more farther flung, um, flances.
Okay. Cause I, I remember in the, the drawings of what could potentially be there is a lot like what you're mentioning, why envision, you know, the Pac West development on 72nd. So it's something that's done in Tiger where, yeah, it's all, you know, Tiger, uh, near 217 years of big, you know, it seems like Pac West specializes in that. Uh, we've, you know, yeah. So, yeah.
And the only difference I would say about some of the stuff on 72nd, that's an older vintage. Um, and nowadays the building, the ceiling heights are higher. Um, I think 24 foot is kind of your, your average that you might see, just so you can do some storage on less space. They stack the pallets higher and higher, but. Um, otherwise it's very, you know, that tilt up concrete, um, very flexible building type.
But then on, on the other side of things I don't want to see, you know, you know, with the, the larger facilities is, uh, over time. You know, I look at what's happened in Northern Portland on Eon. Uh, you know, Montgomery Park area where all that stuff got built up and a lot of it is now vacant. It looks nasty, you know, over time. Uh, it would just let, let go. And that's something we don't want to have, you know, down our southern border. With some of those could be something that can be maintained well and looks good. And, you know, keeps up with the times as you mentioned, Chris, that it can be flexible, but not be an eyesore and vacant. Because it wasn't built, you know, with, uh, the future in mind. And as people already said, we reached up enough about traffic impact, you know, I'm much for, I'm, I would. Much prefer a bunch of passenger cars coming in, you know, people coming in and out, uh, with that employment density versus a bunch of semi trucks. And ideally, if we can attract a company, other companies into that area, folks could live over in our new, uh, Autumn Sunrise. A development and, you know, have a shortcut to work. Um, you know, if we can get the right kind of, uh, of companies and I. Gets to my last point here, um, have you talked to Jonathan, our economic development and you know about our, you know, the sectors that prefer that we'd like to attract in town?
Apologies. Um, I, um, I have to defer to my colleague Sam who's on the phone, but not, um. Uh, online here, uh, whether he's talked to him or not. Chris, I don't know if you and Sam's talked to him specifically. I think the answer is no, he just came to me. But we can, we can definitely, yeah, because we're, we're, our analysis is still sort of midstream. So.
Right. I mean, because we have these sectors, we, you know, dream that we want to land here, you know, food manufacturing or apparel, maybe a little high tech and, you know, I know we're limited in space. But we have those suites by known for, uh, and that I'm seeing that, you know, that's how, uh, the ED person over in Sherwood is landing some of these businesses. Cause they're, they're looking at what they're good at and, you know, sticking to their sectors that they want to attract in their city. So that, uh, you know, we just don't have a schmaddling of everything or something that really doesn't, you know, doesn't provide all the jobs or if the jobs are there. They don't pay very well, you know, a lot of minimum wage, which we don't want to, you know, basically have there. Uh, I think those are my point and we talked about traffic, I'm going to start by traffic. Uh, that's all. Have any other questions? All right. So you're take the show on the road. Uh, when you talk about reaching out to the community at residents and the business community, developers, property management companies. All the above.
All the above, and some of that, um, you know, is, is, um, some of that back will get more. In-depth through, um, the Leland, uh, you know, interviews holders and some of that, we hope to bring them into the, um. You know, more widespread outreach to make sure we're getting, getting everybody and all those perspectives.
Yeah. And I know from some, uh, my, my associate that, um, Wilsonville, Sherwood and GPI are all in our call list to have conversations with.
How about Wadding County?
We can do Washington County too.
Roll the road. So that's one of the people you want to talk to or one of the organizations.
We've got them and we've also got the Chamber of Commerce as well.
All right. All right. Anything else for the team here? All right. Well, thank you for taking some time out tonight. Uh, I'm excited to see this and, uh, see what we can attract in our new urban zone and. You know, make sure that meets the community's needs and get, uh, some great jobs, great businesses, uh, minimize the traffic impact and. You know, have it look nice and have the green spaces, everything we desire.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. We appreciate the, um, feedback on the questions and that'll help us kind of focus on the next steps.
Terrific. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
All right. So that brings us to throw them back up. Uh, council meeting agenda review, communication and our round table. Uh, so we've got. Uh, the pledge of allegiance, which I believe it's, uh, Council President Grimes' turn. All right. Uh, we have a proclamation honoring Chief Steel. We'd like to do that. All right. Counselor Pratt, you got, um, do, 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 let me scroll here. Recognition, reduction, uh, public health announcement. I'll take care of the public announcement. Any questions on the agenda tonight? All right. Uh, with that, we'll go ahead and go into council round table. Um, I'll start off with Saco.
Sorry, I, um, I couldn't find my mute button there for a second. Um, so, um. I had a couple of meetings canceled. Um, we were to have the SRO, um, meeting and that was canceled and that, um. And also the I205, um, diversion task force, those canceled as well. Um, so my meetings were, um. Were a little late, but we have been working on the, um, the core area, um. The tax increment financing district and, um, I think that we had a very successful meeting last week. Um, and we are, uh, looking at the different, um, the different quadrants and possible there. Um, and I think that we're on, on the right track, um, to, um, have some very exciting things, um, going on in that area. Um, and then also working on a possible, um, parks bond, um, part of that committee as well. And I'm excited to see what that committee finalizes here in our, um, our last week, um, of meetings this week. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, Kares.
Um, no meetings this, this last week. So I am, um, meeting next week. I have a couple of meetings with this, with the county, but no meetings in the last two weeks to report on. Thank you.
Council Pratt.
I started on meeting. Oh, well, we were at the budget committee meeting last week, but it was nice to see people in person. Um, and I wasn't able to make the climate action committee meeting this morning because my pain gig took priority, but. Um, I'm sorry, I missed it. And that's all I have.
All right. Uh, Council President Grimes.
Thank you. Yeah, we saw everybody in person at the budgeting and had wonderful tour of operations. Building was fantastic. And then Saturday, two days ago, um, I attended the East Twalton CIO. And I'm happy to say that I think we had about 20 people there, which is a lot. Eighteen to 20 people, which is a lot more than had in quite a while. And we had two new, uh, volunteers. Uh, step up and want to be on the board for the East Twalton CIO, which is great because they're brand new volunteers and new to the CIO process. So I think that's going to be great for the city. And then, um, I wanted to mention some of the feedback. That, uh, came over during the meeting and the biggest feedback was an enormous compliment to Megan George. Uh, not only did she do a great job setting up the meeting, but afterwards I had people come up to me unsolicited and tell me. That, let's see, I wrote this down because I did not forget that number one, she's always helpful, knowledgeable. And a pleasure to work with. And also that she gets back to people quickly. She's wonderful about finding out information. She doesn't know right off the top of her head, which she normally does. That she's excellent about finding the information and getting back to people quickly. And I just thought that that was so wonderful because it just gives the community a wonderful sense of how great our staff is and how much they care. And it was just, you know, I always love to hear compliments about staff and, you know, it was just great. Everyone was just so complimentary of her. And I thought that was wonderful. And she showed up on a Saturday morning and gave of her time and donuts and helped me with my presentation. And I greatly appreciate it, but you know, unsolicited feedback from two members is about the highest compliment, I think that we can get for. Our hardworking staff. So thank you, Megan and Darlin. I hope you're jotting all this down. So, good. Cause it was well done and thank you very much, Megan. Well done.
All right. A handful of meetings for me in the last couple of weeks. Uh, on the 16th, I had the Washington County Coordinating Committee meeting. I sent you those two paragraphs, one, uh, TriMet's Climate Action Plan. And then the list of all the projects that were submitted, uh, for MStep. As you saw, there was quite a few projects, way, way more than we can ever fund. Uh, the rule for MStep is they try to only put on the quote unquote final list, about 150% of what the money can be spent on. Uh, so it does be quite a bit of, uh. Evaluation of what project's going to make the final cut. So more to come there. Uh, later that day, I had the Washington County Chairs Mayor meeting, uh, where Chair Harrington, uh, gave us a copy of that memo I sent forward to. About, uh, sheltering guidelines, homeless shelters, uh, that they're going to start implementing in unincorporated Washington County. At the, uh, Washington County Health Services, um, you know, they're looking, it's a draft memo right now. It's not in stone yet. So if you had a chance to look at it, take a look at it. Uh, Chair Harrington is, uh, you know, looking for feedback. If you see there's some issues or have some questions, uh, she'd be happy to answer your questions. 18th, I had the Greater Portland Inc. Board meeting, uh, where we reviewed the opportunities that are coming into the region. Uh, things are picking up. There is interest throughout the Portland metro area. And, uh, so they're actively, uh, starting to fly around the United States again, you know, promote Portland. Uh, bring people in. So, uh, I think you can act development is going to start picking up here quite a bit in the coming months. Uh, the 19th had the Clackamas County, uh, Chair's Mayor meeting. And of course the biggest question was the Clack County election debacle. And, uh, Sarah Smith, uh, gave us her views on it and what they anticipated, anticipated how the fix was going to run. Uh, you've, you've probably seen it all on the press or asking about your county employees, all hands on deck. To help count these bouts, ideally getting them all counted, uh, within a week or so, so that they can make their June 13th certification deadline. Um, so she, uh, working with the county administrator is, uh, you know, freeing up people to do this and get it done. Um, so we'll, more to hear. Um so we'll more to hear this week. They didn't release any results over the weekend. Hopefully, we'll be seeing some results this week because quite a few elections are still in the balance. There's, you know, at least three or four that, you know, you got we're going to have to wait till Clackamas County's done counting to decide, you know, figure out who has won that election. Uh and then finally, uh on Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, uh it's Tiger-Tolton Community Night at the Hops. Um and I have the great honor along with uh Mayor Snyder to throw out the pitches of the game. So there's a link on the Chambers site uh that they have promotional ticket pricing for the hot game. It's a night like tonight, it's going to be gorgeous out. Uh want to go take the family out to see the Hops game? It's going to be a lot of fun. So because it's going to be promoting Tiger to Walton. I'm going to send a little short bio up to Walton that they're going to announce and everything. So it'll be a lot of fun if you have no plans for Wednesday night. Uh and that's it. And as far as in-person meetings and Cheryl's memo will do that uh during Council Communications at City Council Meeting. Councilor Pratt.
Um oh, your Mstep thing reminded me, I'd go to the seat four meeting. We had Mandy Putney from ODA. Uh and the only news I want to share is that the NIPR process, she was um they got delayed and they're hoping it's done by the end of summer. And why that and that's the environmental study and that is really important for their tolling process to that have to be done before anything moves forward.
Anything else? Right, like so it looks like we're done a little early, so it'll take about a half hour break. And we'll be back at seven o'clock for our regular City Council Meeting.